Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to our special board meeting tonight. Would you please join me in saying the question?
To the right of the United States of America, and to your authority for protestants, one nation, under God, indivisible, and infinite in justice.
My name is Tom Ryan. I'm chairman of the board. To my left is Susan Kaufman, vice chair. And to my right is Steve Quillwick. To Susan's left is our solicitor, Jim Garret. Standing here at the podium there is our now president, Dr. Ryan. I'm going to turn the meeting over to Jim to go over the information, the layout of what we're going to be doing tonight. And we'll be having a public comment afterwards. Jim?
Ladies and gentlemen, this is a special meeting of the board supervisors advertised for one and only one reason. And that's what we'll get to immediately. I'd like to, I think you know that the settlement agreement that we'll be talking about this evening has been on the website. For any of you who don't know that, you can get a copy off the website and see where we are. But I'd like to try to explain it a little bit to you, to those of you who aren't, who don't have a copy of it this evening, or who would be interested in a little bit of what I mean to talk about is what I'll call procedural background. And most of you know this very well, but I'll put it out there for everyone anyway. In 2013, the board's potential board supervisors amended the township zoning ordinance to permit two athletic fields at the high school, Backton High School, to be illuminated by light towers up to a maximum height of eighty-five feet, but by conditional use. That means a formal hearing in front of the board. The school did file a conditional use application under the amended ordinance in the summer of 2013, proposing to light the football stadium and one auxiliary field, both of which were to be changed, and I think maybe they have been changed already, from grass to synthetic turf. That lighting would take place with eleven towers ranging in height from seventy feet to eighty-five feet. The board conducted sixteen public hearings on this conditional use application from September 2013 to October 6th, 2014, in which numerous neighbors became parties, and most of the parties sought to oppose the application. During the hearings, the district suggested on several occasions that increasing the maximum height of the poles to 100 feet would permit the district to better focus the lights to reduce the glare and the light encroachment upon the neighbors. This board rendered its decision on conditional use on December 17, 2014, granting the school district virtually everything it had requested, but subject to a number of conditions which were designed to protect the use and enjoyment of adjacent residential properties. The district appealed the board's decision on January 15 of this year, asking the court to set aside eleven of the sixteen conditions that had been imposed by the board, and asserting numerous procedural deficiencies in the board's decision. The township intervened in that appeal on January 19 of this year, and a group of neighbors intervened on March 4 of this year. On June 3 of this summer, the district filed a motion for leave to present additional evidence. On June 4, the next day, one of the judges in the Montgomery County Court of Common Pleas scheduled a conference in his chambers in July 2015, which resulted in the beginning of settlement discussions among the parties supervised by the judge. Within two weeks of that conference, the district submitted plans and a draft settlement agreement to all of the parties for their review and comments. After numerous discussions among council for the parties, another conference supervised by the judge on October 7 led to a draft settlement agreement, which the parties were instructed to take back to their respective boards or to their neighborhood group for a vote. I believe the school district approved that settlement agreement at the meeting last night, and the agreement is now before this board for a vote tonight. I don't know for certain at this point, although I've talked to their attorney several times, that I do not know for certain what the neighbors intend to do. Let me just summarize the agreement as it now stands from those discussions. First of all, the conditions in the board's conditional use decision from earlier this year would be replaced by the conditions in the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement has to be approved by the parties and the boards. As you know, boards like the school district and the township can't approve anything except in a public meeting. So it has to be voted upon, and that's what brings us here this evening, and what brought the school district together last night. The settlement agreement also has to be approved by the court after an advertised public hearing. Now, in terms of those conditions, which are the most important to everybody, as modified in the settlement agreement, they would be as follows: that the settlement agreement and all plans attached there too are intended to resolve all the remaining issues and all the existing litigation between the school district and the township and the neighbors. The only event that would need to take place subsequent to the school district is for the lighting plans to be, two things actually, the lighting plans to be examined by the township's independent lighting consultant, and for the lighting consultant further to reexamine those lights when they've been installed, to make sure they don't violate any of the illumination issues that are still part of the zoning ordinance. All development by the school district shall be consistent with the settlement agreement and with the plans. So if a light tower, for example, were even a tree, is planted in a location not provided for by the plans, that would not be allowed. So those plans are in our possession and are being reviewed as we speak. Condition three says that the backed school district shall install such trees and bermings as are shown on the plan. Condition four had been required because by this board that the entire perimeter of the school district on what I'll call the lower side, I guess, and the creep along the roadside was supposed to be fenced, and that condition has been eliminated. Condition five says that notwithstanding the landscape plan the school district agrees to deposit an additional sum of $20,000 to be used by the township after everything's been installed, the lights and the landscape, the person of the plan, to add additional landscape if it is needed to buffer the lighting from the neighbors. So there'd be a landscape plan plus an additional $20,000, if needed, to further buffer the neighbors from the lights. Condition six says the height of the light poles may be increased from eighty-five, the maximum height, I'm sorry, the light poles may be increased from a maximum height of eighty-five feet to a maximum height of 100 feet. However, that is only if, that presumes that the two of the light poles go away completely. So we're now, instead of eleven light poles, there would be nine light poles, still, light poles, I'm sorry, still on those two fields. None of the glare, illumination, spillage requirements in his own ordinance can be violated even though the poles can be higher. So although the poles get higher, the illumination levels when they hit the ground and when they hit the property lines, et cetera, are not allowed to be increased past what the ordinance already requires. Condition number seven is the one that requires the berms, and also mentions that the township's lighting consultant will verify the light illumination levels and the levels at the property lines of the property, which are, have limits of one foot candle and 0.5 foot candles, depending upon whether it's measured horizontally or vertically. But that doesn't change that. Now, the use of the lights, which was a big issue, you will recall, is only permitted for the competitions, practices, and other events undertaken by the students of the Backton School District, or the league in which that school district plays, or by, I'm sorry, or by local community organizations based within the school district. There shall be no use, and that is condition final, there should be no use of the softball fields, which aren't being illuminated, or the auxiliary field, I'm sorry, let me just stay with the softball fields. There's no use of the softball fields on the property by any group comprised of individuals who are not of pre-kindergarten through 12th grade age. There is no use of the auxiliary field, which is the non-stadium field down closer to the neighborhood, that being daytime or nighttime use on the property by groups who are not of the same age, that is, pre-K to 12th grade. There is no use of the lights on the football field by groups who are not of the same age, except for three times per year, and then only when a group can demonstrate the applicable 501(c) status, 501(c) status. And just to explain that a little better, that's for a function such as relay for light and something like that, because it would need to be a charitable organization. It could involve adult adults, and the lights could be on pursuant to the ordinance for those groups. Condition number nine says the lights may be used only at the times permitted by the lighting ordinance, which as you know is Monday through Saturday, six days a week, theoretically. No use of the lights on Sunday. Obviously, there won't be use of the lights during the summer, or not as much use of the lights at any time when there is light, from eight-thirty to forty-five, or up to, for example, daylight savings time, maybe the summer, or things like that. The lights will only be needed during those times, maybe fifteen to thirty minutes a day, anyway. So there won't be use of the lights at that time. Now, the maximum average level of illumination for the lights was another subject that was discussed a great deal, and again, I broke it down by fields. On the auxiliary field, the lighting, the illumination level, I'm sorry, on that field would be limited to fifty foot candles for lacrosse practices, lacrosse games, and football games. All other use of that field by all other teams, games or practices of any sport whatsoever other than the ones I named, would be limited to thirty foot candles. So that's for games and practices for all other sports other than lacrosse and football games. The maximum level of illumination for the lights in the stadium field would be exactly the same. That is, fifty foot candles for lacrosse practices and games then, fifty foot candles for football games. All other use of the stadium by any other sport, by the band, by graduation, by anything, is limited to thirty foot candles. The school district has agreed to be responsible for providing adequate security, especially for all illuminated events, but particularly for Friday night football. The lights on the concession area have to be installed, I'm sorry, have to be installed as shown on the plans. The emergency lighting for both fields must be installed, must be installed as shown on the plans, and except for the conditions I've just gotten through, every other aspect of the use of the lights shall give him full compliance with section 150-200 of the board's reserving ordinance. And the final condition is, as I said at the beginning, that all of the lighting, once installed, has to be re-inspected by the township's consultant to determine that it is still in compliance with the plan as designed. So if it shows 0.1 foot candles at a property line, that's what it has to be, and now have to be remeasured once the lights are fully installed. Now, what this means, I think, one of the things this means anyway for the township is that we have an end to this litigation and the expense of this litigation. And although the matter could probably be litigated further, there would be the expense and the really significant delay to the students of the school district that would be involved in further litigation. The judge himself estimated it would be up to four years before those lights could be turned on if the litigation continued. So it's something that I think the township wants to do, that the school district obviously wants to do, and it's something that benefits everyone. Now, I did some homework myself today because this is a special meeting, and the question is a relevant one, what kind of public comment is permitted at a special meeting of the board where there's only one item, one item only, and only agenda? It turns out that that is answered by the case law interpreting the Sunshine Act. And board supervisors need only take public comment tonight on one issue that's on the board. So the board will not take public comment on any subject but for this settlement agreement. The issue of whether these kinds of lights should be or should not be permitted on the school district property is frankly border with the data at this point. The board passed the ordinance, the board held a conditional use hearing. It was a lengthy conditional use hearing. And what's relevant to the evening is the settlement agreement that I summarized, and that is on agenda. So with that background, with that attempted summary of what the settlement agreement provides, I'll turn it back to Mr. Buster to address your public comments, which I'm sure the board would like to have.
Okay, we're going to start with public comments. Who wants to talk? We'll start over here first, anyone on this side? Anyone want?
Jim, I'm Mr. Sester. So if you get this correctly, we get public comment? Then when you make the motion for the vote, we get to comment again?
No, this is it.
Well, then you're doing it wrong. You know, eight, type, motion, second, then comment. So you have to reevaluate what you're doing.
No, you don't, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, he's wrong again. He's wrong again.
Can I just, can I, my speaker, Mr. Chairman? So fancy pause. The procedure as set forth in the Sunshine Act doesn't involve motion, second motion, at fault. It says, "Public comment must be received before the board takes action." That's all it says.
No, it says on motion. That's what it says. On a motion. You forgot that part.
That's not it.
That's what it says. Seven, ten, point one, A and C. On a motion, or a vote.
Put it paired up, Jim, if we have a motion.
Yeah, you can do that. That's not a good setup. I'm reading right now.
That's what you should do.
I want Mr. Moll to be able to say it.
It's in the act. And if you remember, I said he would say this earlier to that.
It's in the act.
Was that in the way?
Absolutely, okay, absolutely.
Can we have a motion to approve the settlement agreement as emphasized by Jim?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I am willing to approve the settlement agreement that the Backton has presented.
Oh, a comment is a second, that's how he wants it to be. He's being wrong now.
We're just, we're doing a motion and a second. If there is one, then we will.
We won't be a vote.
Okay, well, before we do that, I have a question. I guess before we do that, I guess the last time we met in executive session, we have our agenda going to do, you went to the court, and I presented the judge. And I'm just a little concerned if we spent sixteen meetings here, and we heard consultant after consultant regarding the light issue that we want to make. And the second one was the day it could be used. I'm just questioning that in our executive session, we were getting pretty strong in this conviction. And I guess I'm questioning, how do we get to this point?
How do we get to this point? First of all, we really should have a second before discussion. It doesn't have to be a vote, you can have a second without a vote.
Okay.
Okay. The move to second, and now we're taking questions. I'll try to answer your questions.
Can I question the proceeding?
Let's just keep this as simple as we can, because it doesn't even say you have to do it this way. The answer to your question is that Judge Delachi scheduled two conferences in his office. And at this conclusion of the second conference, he asked the board supervisors, and he asked those present, me in particular, to take the settlement agreement back to the township to see if the township could vote for it favorably. You don't have to vote for it favorably, but it's simply before you this evening, as I described and on your website, to be considered for a vote. That's all.
I guess my question is, I understand the grading and the berms and all, but probably ninety-eight percent of meetings never really addressed that and the litter problem. We've heard from experts around the country, from the starting group to the environmental people regarding light pollution, and this pollution, and that pollution, as well as the amount of trace seaweed from muscular lakes and something regarding the brightness of the water, and we chat with those people. And now it seems like we're rolling over. I'm just questioning where we got to this point, that, you know, a week ago, you were standing firm on your ground. Now, I guess the judge was with you, and said that a number of dates that will take lawsuits to give it off, and then now back to jail.
We're not going out to a man cave because there hasn't been a vote. The board still retains authority to do as you deem appropriate in this matter. You've seen the settlement agreement. It's on the website, and the only thing we were instructed by the judge was to bring it to the board for a vote.
All right. And I guess to go back, I guess I have a question that I hope you learned from our hearing, that I remember as a solicitor for the school district that two issues need be addressed: the brightness of the lights and the number of dates to be used. There's other stuff we discussed regarding size of the baseball and the soccer ball, all the other things. You know, I'm wondering for the Joe Zatlos input, the expert that they had, Joe Zatlos, who's been talking about the traffic tolls around the school with pollution, the kids walking on people's property and the gate with wetting time. You know, they're getting a, apparently we're looking for that, but some of these issues that were dealt with rather extensively during the meetings, it's like, it's a hearing, like, not that we wasted sixteen nights and two and a half years of time, but I think the township would have dealt with the neighbors by themselves. It should be the township that dealt with the school district, maybe things would be quicker, and we would be stuck here where we are tonight.
All I can tell you is that all of those issues that you mentioned, and many, many, many more, were discussed with the judge. We are where we are.
Okay. Now, let's move back to Dr. Moll and his comments. Start them in five minutes again.
Right. I just checked Sunshine Hall. I just checked it on my phone. Says you're going to take public comment prior to the vote on any motion.
Okay.
Look at it. So.
I was supposed to do it like, if I'm a child or acting.
But you're good.
Jim, did you look it up?
You're good.
I think you looked.
You're good. You did it right. But what I will say is, for extension, what Steve said, when I read through this, and I have to thank Tom Ryan for putting this on, Tom Ryan for putting this on the website so we can see it ahead of time. When I evaluated this, it appears to me that ninety-nine percent of your conditions have been removed. So that this is pretty much a by right application right now. Basically, the school district has to comply with the ordinance. That's what it is. There are no conditions on this application, if you look at it and compare it. So maybe you can tell me if I'm wrong. You went from the, or they went from the eighty-five foot restriction to the hundred, back to the hundred foot that they originally had. And if you remember, you and I went back and forth about why you went from 100 feet to 85 feet. And I couldn't understand why you changed it. Actually, you really didn't have a good reason. Actually, it's better, it's better at 100 foot. There's actually less glare to the neighbors at this point. And the two poles, God knows how much money. They got their 50 limits. Yeah, 50 limits, that was the biggest part of the whole case. This argument, 50 versus 30 limits. Well, they got their 50 limits. So that restriction is now wrong. Four to six nights a week. You know, your condition was four nights a week. Well, they went back to their six nights a week. Six nights a week is in the ordinance. That was in your ordinance originally. They complied with your ordinance. That was in the ordinance. So, you know, all they're doing is complying with your ordinance. No $300,000 chain link fence, you know. So you just saved the taxpayers 300 grand. Two poles, another couple hundred grand. And according to the newspaper, you know, this decision is going to save the taxpayers $100,000. And all it's doing is complying with your ordinance. Basically, a by right decision. So if you had, I've never had this conditional use hearing, you know, we would have saved 100 grand or maybe 300. God knows how much it's the salt costs, time, effort, delays to the children, and their whatever. So, you know, in looking at this, I think it's a good thing. I told you in the last supervisor's meeting to settle, get done, quit hold of the project. So, you know, I think it's a good thing to get this thing through. All the things that are in this agreement are basically required of the ordinance. So you wrote a good ordinance, they complied with it, and now you guys have come back to your ordinance and pretty much said, "Okay, yeah, do everything in the ordinance." And I think that's what Steve was trying to make. It's literally waste about two years. And fighting about this sort of stuff, when it comes down to it, your settlement agreement is basically everything in the ordinance. So my advice to you is sign and get done.
Okay, Jim. Anyone else over here? Move to this end back.
I'm your board supervisor. I'll stop mine a little bit today. Stop wasting any more time. I think it's good, good for the school, good for the township, it's good for the neighbors. Okay. I respectfully request, again, that this board reconsider its policy on public comment so that the townspeople have an opportunity to address things that they cannot anticipate that you were raising during these meetings. Thank you.
Anyone else over here? Move to this side. Anyone ever here? Mark.
Mark Lenz. I just, I think I understood Jim right. Is there going to be a lighting survey done prior to the installation of the lights?
Surveying, there is.
Well, zero foot candles is the absence only. So, but you're asking 0.5 or 0.10. That could likely have come from spillage of the actual property line at the property line. So if you don't know what's there before you start, the school district could be in a position where they have 1.1. It's not their responsibility, it's the homeowner's responsibility to put the light there. I'm just, if you have baseline, it solves a lot of problems in order of that. Do I need to suggest change? I go back to the sound ordinance that has a, you know, 20 decibels higher than AM, but nobody knows what AM is, so we'll go with the rest.
On evidence, board district township. There's a former known hollerer. I was up today to look at the field. And believe me, that field almost looks ashamed of the Eagles' field. Not their plan yet. I don't know about that. Before I really get into things here, if we'd have these lights ten to twenty years ago, maybe the kids playing football wasn't able to see the ball better, or catch the football, and they wouldn't have the record that they had. But they are by heart, and they do really try. And I thought this way a few of them today. And believe me, they're all in favor of the football lights. Now, before I get too far, but how are we supposed to vote on this matter tonight? We don't know how the supervisors are going to vote. Because if you vote in favor, I'm going to have something nice to say. And if you vote against it... And if you vote against it, believe me, I'm gonna have to be escorted out of here.
Threaten somebody now?
What's that?
Or you threaten somebody now?
No, I'm not threatening anybody. I'm not threatening anybody, I'm just promising you something.
I'll threaten this listener, how do you? Maybe you can share my name, you can share that with me.
All right. Well, I'm not from Russia, but I believe that we still have a.
Rob, you threatened, I shouldn't say, you threatened.
Let me finish with, I'm not from Russia, but we have a constitution, and one of the things in the amendments is freedom of speech within a reason. I haven't said anything that's out of reason, but I would.
You made the S word out, but it doesn't go the way you want it to go. That's all I'm saying. Get the careful respect, that's all.
The S, what's the S word?
Escorted, escorted.
I'm not even into that. I looked at the field, I talked to the players, everybody's in favor of the lights. Now, I cannot imagine any one of you three that aren't looking at that are all intelligent. I'm not arguing that. But I cannot understand if one or a fog, you vote against this should be approved tonight, and I would venture to say you're talking about candle lights, pack power of the lights. I would venture not one of you three knows what a half a candle of power is, little unapproved. We've had experts come in, go over everything, Dr., Jerry went over everything the others in it last night, explained it in full detail, same as he did tonight, everything is perfect. If there's a minor problem, we'll fix it. But you're making a mountain out of a molehill, and I can't believe any one of you three are gonna vote against this tonight. Now, let me ask you this, are you gonna vote tonight on it?
Yes, we have a motion on the floor.
Okay. Well, if you vote in favor of it, that's fine, but if you don't, I'll be back to my table, I got some other things I wanna keep in my back pocket. Remember, Friday night football is high school, Saturday's football, and Sunday is freshman, and it's always been that way, and Mathackton is not a poor town, and we're the only light, only township that has no stoplight football. Every other township in Hummer County, it used to be Yonetta and didn't have it, now they have it, and we're the only one that doesn't have it. So let's get on the ball. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Anyone else ever on this side before I call a question? In the back there, Jim.
Jeff, you would sign the answer, should we have his name? All right, I just wanted to talk about the deal process that we've been following, and remind everyone that the neighbors were not opposed to the lights. It sounds as though a few people have already mentioned that, the lights need to have, everyone agrees that the lights need to have. So I think it's very important, there was not a neighbor run at the stoplights, rather the neighbors were hopeful that the township supervisors and the process would yield a conditional use that lasts between the school district, the township, and the neighbors. And from what I've read here today, from what I've read here today, I don't think we have that. I think we have a very one-sided agreement that favors this, this school district, and really doesn't consider all the expert testimony, all the investment by the neighbors and the township into those conditions. And I don't understand why we are now at this point with almost a surrender or a full award of the condition to the school, and very, very little consideration to neighbors. So again, the point is, there was no dispute about the lights from the neighbors, the neighbors are supportive of the lights. The conditional use, that was in your hands, that was your work responsibility through the process to make sure that the light condition was set close by best. And I just, I just don't feel like we have that, that's an account.
And last, Karen.
First and foremost, I'd like to thank the supervisors for their continued attention and diligence on the high school field lighting project. The settlement represents a compromise for all parties. Like most compromises, as Jeff mentioned, it's not perfect, but it will allow us to move forward as a community. The agreement meets my primary concern, limiting the use of the new fields to pre-K in school age children, with few exceptions. It's unfortunate that the school district refused to discuss this as a community and forced your hand having a necessarily extended application review process. With your decision in December as a result of more than a year of discussion, I recognize that you attempted to strike fair balance. The school district challenged you and the neighbors further with yet another expensive and prolonged process through an appeal. Again, the last 10 months could have been avoided if the school had taken a more partner approach in the appeal process. The school district's board is the reason that so much time and money has been spent on this discussion. It could have been so much easier and less damaging to the total community. What an interesting lesson for our current school board members to teach our children. Mr. Whitely, I appreciate your comments and agree that all of the considerations you mentioned should have been given more weight by the judge for settlement. I'm sure he lives in a community, he cares about, and where he has neighbors. As we are still a community, it is time for this discussion to end. I encourage the board to accept this settlement agreement, recognizing that it's at least to an end, and that the, and that the total community will truly benefit. Thank you.
One else? Karen, not men, move on. When I call a question, all those in favor of the motions, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, motion for German? Aye. Call a favor?
Aye.
Second, Paul. One else?